Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion for the regular minutes of March 10th, 2014?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I have a motion for the executive minutes of April 11th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
It's already been discussed, roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
May I have a motion of the regular minutes of April 11th, 2014?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
And a motion for the executive minutes of April 28th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Already discussed, roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Welcome, everyone. We have a full house, and I'm sure it's related to a lot of things later on the agenda, and not the recognizing great effort and swearing in officers, though it's always good to have a good crowd here on a lovely evening. Couple of things I want to comment before I do some proclamations. One, thank the Patriotic Celebrations Committee for their great leadership in our parade and event on Memorial Day. As I often say here throughout Madison, Madison knows how to do it, so people don't think Memorial Day is an unofficial day of start of summer, but truly is to recognize those who have given their lives for our nation, and it was a tremendously well-done event. So let's... And two proclamations, the recipients are not here, so I'll do these from up here. I want to talk about a call I got a few weeks ago to do a very different proclamation, and that was in recognition of Bill Klepper. He is a father of a couple of Cub Scouts, and he is fighting cancer. In his battle, cancer, he lost a leg, was amputated, but he wanted to prove to himself, to others, that that is just a challenge and not a reason not to do things. And so this Sunday, this past Sunday, the Kings Road School Pack 226 Cub Scouts hiked up to the top of Pyramid Mountain to Tripod Rock. Bob Landrigan volunteered his time along with ambulance, a couple of volunteer ambulance corps members to escort him in case he had any problems, but with crutches, he took a path different than the Scouts did, and he made it to the top, and so when the Scouts arrived about a half hour later, there was Mr. Klepper sitting in his chair, and you should have seen the reaction of the Scouts to see, yes, you can do it, and especially his sons truly appreciate it. So it was a moving experience. They thanked me for going out of my way, but I would say that's nothing, you know, that is recognition of great effort. And I'll just read out the, two of the lines in the end there. Whereas the success of Bill Klepper should be a call to all Madison Scouts, present absent, and their families, that perseverance in any situation cannot be accomplished without hope, and whereas the leadership of tomorrow's dawn begins with these Scouts here today as we celebrate and commemorate the adventurous spirit embodied by all present, and Bill Klepper certainly demonstrated that. So let's give Bill a good hand. And I often, or not too often do I do a proclamation for someone's birthday, but when you were born in 1906 and you're celebrating your 108th birthday, it is certainly a cause for proclamation. Regretfully, that 8:00 PM on a Wednesday is past Cory Jigget's bedtime, so I will, she will not be here tonight, but I will be presenting this to her on her birthday this Saturday. So here's, and this great proclamation gives a little background of who she is and puts in perspective her life. Whereas Cory Jiggetz, the daughter of a slave, was born on May 31st, 1906, in Chapel Hill, North Carolina, where she grew up and married her first husband, Jesse Durham, and had a son, Jesse Junior. And whereas in 1930, five years before this building was built, she came to live on Central Avenue in Madison to take care of her sister, Jessie. And whereas later she moved to Park Avenue to a home originally had other tenants, one of whom Deacon Stillman Jiggetz became her second husband, where she continues to live today on her own. Whereas from the years 1946 to 1986, Mrs. Jiggetz worked for two Madison families, the Pilches and then the Kreitlers, and whereas in addition to the Kreitlers' three children, Mrs. Jiggetz watched over the young neighbor, Bill Bigelow, who today now watches over Mrs. Jiggetz. Whereas as a member of the First Baptist Church for 83 years, Cory Jiggetz, a deaconess, has been involved in many ministries, and whereas the church honored Mrs. Jiggetz in 1995 by renaming its missionary ministry, Cory Jiggetz Missionary Ministry, she has earned the title of Church Mother, and whereas Cory Jiggetz is blessed to be a grandmother, great-grandmother, and a great-great-grandmother, and whereas with the assistance of the Kreitler and Bigelow families, the First Baptist Church, and local agencies, Cory Jiggetz has been able to maintain her independence and is inspiration to so many. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim May 31st, 2014 as Cory Jiggetz Day in honor of her 108th birthday celebration. Congratulations are extended on her special day with best wishes and many more. If you can indulge me for another minute with in honor of Cory Jiggetz, since we are recording this and hopefully we can get her in front of a camera, is how about if we all rise and do a happy birthday to Cory Jiggetz? Please rise. And I can't sing, but I'll say the first word. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday dear Cory. Happy Birthday to you. At the last meeting, a resolution was passed appointing our two newest auxiliary officers, Andres Vargas and Tyler Stelgens, and we will now swear them in, so let's start with Andres. And Andres and Chief and who else wants can come on up here? Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
I am Andres Vargas.
Duesolemy swear.
Duesolemy swear.
That I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of auxiliary police officer.
Of auxiliary police officer.
For the Borough of Madison.
For the Borough of Madison.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear truth, faith.
Truth, faith.
Truth, faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States. And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and thank you for stepping forward. Tyler. Start off facing the right direction this time. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Tyler Stelgens.
Duesolemy swear.
Duesolemy swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of auxiliary police officer.
Of auxiliary police officer.
For the Borough of Madison.
For the Borough of Madison.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear truth, faith.
And I will bear truth, faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
The governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Of the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and thank you for stepping forward. I just have a few more proclamations to read through. Actually, this is a multiple one. I understand we have a few Eagle Scouts in the audience. Please step on forward. Not too often the mayor gets squeezed out. It makes me feel short, too. It is not too often we get to see so many Eagle Scouts achieve that honor in a given year. It is, as anyone knows, to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout takes a lot of work, perseverance, and dedication, and then we have it in this group here. And what I'll do is before I read the resolution, I will ask you to introduce yourself, you don't, just state your name, and you're in school, I guess will be good enough. Your project is listed in the proclamation, so you don't need to talk about that. Start.
My name is Noah Gertler, I'm a senior at Madison.
I'm Patrick Sheehy, I'm a senior at Madison.
I'm Chris Driscoll, I'm a senior at Madison.
I'm Robert Dodario, I'm a senior at Madison.
Joseph Falco, also a senior.
I'm Ryan Hoover, I'm a senior at Madison.
I'm Jack Dodario, also a senior at Madison.
I'm John Gehin, I'm a sophomore at Madison.
And not only have these Scouts shown leadership skills, but they've given back to community by taking on projects that pay back to the community for years to come. Whereas introduced in 1911, the Eagle Scout is the highest rank in the Boy Scouts of America, and whereas to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout, a scout must live by the principles of scout oath, scout law, and earn a 21 merit badges, and demonstrate service and leadership, including extensive service project. And whereas nine Scouts in the Boy Scout Troop 25 achieved the rank of Eagle Scout during the year 2013 and 2014 by completing the following projects. Joseph Falco completed installation of a trail dedicated to active and passive recreation and conservation at the Madison Recreation Center. Noah Gertler cleared and created a trail from Pomeroy Road to the library. Chris Driscoll refurbished computer equipment, established a computer room for residents at the nonprofit Family Promise. Patrick Sheehy refurbished playground and surrounding equipment at New Life Church. J.O. completed another project, New Life Church removing shrubs and adding new plantings to the landscape around the property. Jack Humphries developed the application app for school to notify students of onsite emergency and exit plans. Jack Dodario cleared and created a trail at Summer Hill Park. Robbie Dodario cleared and created a trail and refurbished picnic tables at Memorial Park. Ryan Hoover added plantings around the grounds at Central Avenue School and painted games on the playground blacktop. And another scout in Troop 25, John Gehin, will, let me try it again, John completed his project constructing and placing birdhouses around the borough and is scheduled to obtain the rank of Eagle Scout later this year upon completion of several merit badges. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby commend these Eagle Scouts for their efforts and dedication to these projects and express the best wishes on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Congratulations. Wayne, Wayne, would you like to say a few words about the troop? Uh-oh. Is that a mistake?
Well, with that welcome, I'm ready to go. Now, this is, this is great that the town has acknowledged this accomplishment in Troop 25. This is the first year that we've had so many Scouts make this rank, and you talked earlier, Bob, about leadership and perseverance, and certainly they showed it. They've given back to community, they've helped others, they've worked as a team together, and they're kind of a band of brothers within the troop, and they've all succeeded very well, and I'm very proud of them all. Congratulations.
And remember these faces and names because it, as I said before, it takes great leadership skills to be Eagle Scout. These are going to be leaders in our town, and when you see Eagle Scout on a resume, interview them. They're ready. Okay, we are now onto our regular agenda, and everyone is welcome to stay, but if you're, if there's going to be a mass exit, just let me know and we'll, okay.
Oh, okay.
We'll pause for just a second. Just a reminder, the meeting will be starting back in just a few seconds, so take the conversations downstairs if you can. Thank you all for coming. You can catch the rest of the meeting on cablevision and files, or at Rosnet. Okay, we'll now report some committee. Health, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. The Health Department will, will be conducting an adult health screening program on Saturday, June 7th. They will be testing everybody's, individuals' blood work, that will include cholesterol and other blood components. It's a $25 fee, it's non-refundable, that's on Saturday, June 7th, and on Monday, June 9th, they'll be conducting free men's cancer screening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Catalonello.
Thank you very much, Mayor. The State Planning Division of the New Jersey Department of Transportation has sent a 21-day notice regarding the repaving of Madison Avenue State Highway 124 during the evenings over the next month. A follow-up planning meeting is scheduled this Friday, after which we anticipate contractor's schedule for paving will be disclosed. Several utility and drainage improvement projects have been prioritized as a result of this announcement. The 2014 road improvement program awarded to Sefeli and Sons Construction commenced with drainage improvement work on Academy Road. Please be aware, the construction representative for the Borough of Madison, Dennis Harrington, will also be making an effort to reach out to residents of North Street to offer pipe connections for roof leaders and sump pumps in an attempt to eliminate winter icing rainfall impacts into the sanitary sewer. East Street parking lot improvement projects may be awarded, subject to a small increase in prior appropriations for the project. This award will allow scheduling for the completion of construction work within 60 days. Good news on the sewers, the Treadwell Pump Station, the generator has been installed by DPW personnel, and a gas main along Treadwell Avenue to the sewer pump station for the emergency generator is currently being installed by PSENG. The new plastic gas main across the State Highway 124 is designed for higher pressure services, will improve the gas utility infrastructure for the entire neighborhood of Treadwell, Nordling, and Laurel Way, as well as a pump station. As part of the Bailey Ellard Site Remediation Plan, several small fence and sign revisions coordinated by staff before the final remedial action permit documents are submitted to the state. Limited sampling has been proposed for the upper foot of impacted soil area to determine whether additional fence is necessary in certain locations. This sampling work is scheduled for this Friday. At the MRC, Trails Improvement Project is being finalized by the Land Conservancy for the complex according to the master plan work formalized last year. National Trails Day event is being considered for June 7th to acknowledge volunteers and staff who are working on this Trails project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a report from Michael Piano of the Electric Department. They completed a pole transfer at Kings Road Substation. They installed and transferred new poles on Highview Terrace, and they began a system reinforcement of the main circuit. They removed transformers on Alexander Avenue, which is the old Jaguar Building, and they installed anchor and down guy at Pine Tree Terrace and Brook Lake Road. I just want to reiterate what you said about the Patriotic Celebration Committee. This bunch of guys really worked very hard, they were, they're very concerned about keeping that as solemn as they possibly can, but at the same time, I think they, they just did a tremendous, tremendous job this year. It all went well, and they're, they're a wonderful group of veterans, you know, they're from Vietnam and, and from Korea, and I just want to say that it's an absolute pleasure knowing them and working with them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add to what Mr. Catalonello said, we definitely are having the dedication of the Trails at the Madison Recreation Complex Saturday, June 7th, from 11:00 AM to noon. We will have a ribbon cutting by Mayor Bob Conley, we will have refreshments and tours, and it is also National Trail Day, so we'd love everybody to come and celebrate with us. Thank you, Mayor.
You. Finance and Borough Clerk, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick reminder, June 3rd, this coming Tuesday is Primary Election Day, the polls will be open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I've announced this before, but I think it's worth reiterating that those of you who live in Districts 2, 4, and 10 will have a change in venue for voting. You will see the new address on your sample ballot, and if you have any questions at all as to where to go, please call the Borough Clerk's office. As far as financial matters, we continue to make good progress in negotiations with our employees. We have now, yet another union has settled, the Federation, representing our white-collar and supervisory employees, and we have yet one to go, but things are moving along, I believe, to everyone's satisfaction. In the Electric Utility Department, which I normally don't talk about, but there are two financial matters there that are worth mentioning. One is that you may see on tonight's agenda, the electric rebate that we discussed a while ago, it's essentially the same program that we had mentioned at the outset with one major revision. Because of census data, behavior of applicants, et cetera, we have now increased the scope to include everyone in Madison, every household in Madison with income of $40,000 or less. That, just as an FYI, that's still largely seniors, but not entirely. And finally, I wanted to mention that the Audit Committee has received a draft of the 2013 Audit. We've set up a time in mid-June to review the draft, and information will be forthcoming for the residents of Madison. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, for the Senior Center, they gave me a list of things by the numbers this year. 18 is the number of seniors who registered for help with Madison's High School Senior Day of Service, which will be coming up this Friday, May 30th. Majority of help isn't requested for yard work. 24 is the current number of clients in the Madison Floren Park Meals on Wheels, an increase of 10 over just the past seven months. And 30 is the number of years the Summer Seminar Series has been presenting speakers on a wide variety of contemporary topics, local and state history and cultural offerings. The series is co-sponsored with the Madison Public Library. And for the DDC, just remind everybody, the Madison Farmers Market returns next Thursday, June 5th. It will run every Thursday from 1st to 6th on Green Village Road next to the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, and that'll be through October 16th. We'd like to thank Drew University and Gary's Wine Marketplace for their continued support of this great program. Also, as part of the Farmers Market, we will again run the Buy Fresh, Give Fresh program every week this year. It's an initiative to bring farm-fresh produce to soup kitchen recipients in Morris County. Each week shoppers will have the opportunity to buy produce at market and drop it off in our Buy Fresh, Give Fresh wagon right in the market. At the end of the day, all this produce is picked up by Madison volunteers and taken to local soup kitchen and food pantry in Dover. We welcome any additional volunteers to help transport this material to Dover. If you're an individual, or business, or church group, or scout troop, or family who'd like to help, please contact Barbara Hughes at FarmersMarket@Rosnet.org. Next, the sidewalk sounds, sidewalk sounds rather, is a big hit. We've had a large and quick response from local performers who want to participate, and the 21-week schedule is now full, and we have secured drip as our place in case of rain. So there's going to be live music in Madison every Thursday evening from 6:30 to 8:00 PM through September. And finally, the Subcommittee of the DDC is moving forward with the Madison 125th Anniversary festivities. We now have flags that have gone to print and should be out in early June. Plans are being made to integrate the 125th Anniversary into the Sidewalk Banner Art Gallery. A program for kids is being rolled out to the school called Flat Madison. And finally, there's a potential for a clam bake later this summer. Stay tuned for details. Thank you.
Communications and petitions.
Yes, Mayor Counsel received two communications, an email received May 19th from Kate Gillian of Dean Street commending Officer Chad Ripka for his help with traffic safety on Dean Street, and an email received May 28th from Michael Christman of Myrtle Avenue regarding the establishment of a dog park.
Thank you. And now we're on to the invitation for discussion, the first of two. This is one that is limited to items on the discussion agenda and resolutions that are on consent agenda, so on the agenda discussion, we have the MAF Annual or Quarterly Financial Report, rather, we have Green Village Road School Property Redevelopment, Electric Rebate Program, Amending Chapter 94 Lucky Utility for Payment Related to Payment of Water and Electric Bills, Appropriation of $150,000 for Sewer Linings Improvements, Appropriation of $75,000 for Emergency Sewer Construction, Appropriation of $30,000 for Signalization Improvements, Amendment to Ordinance 34/2013. Ordinance 34-2013, additional funds capital improvement for East Street Parking Lot, appropriation of $200,000 General Capital Improvement Fund for milling and overlay of various roads. So those are the items you can question or comment on, or items for the, on the consent agenda. With those guidelines, anyone wishing to comment, please step up to the microphone, state your name and your address, write the same on the clipboard, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard? Hello, Sam?
Sam Cerciolo, Park Avenue, Madison. An ordinance with the $30,000, are they going to fix the lights around town? Is that what that means?
The signalization. It's, yeah, blinkers that intersect, that's...
Is this my time waiting? All I'm asking is that if that's the situation, the worst light in Madison is the one in front of CJ's early in the morning up till around 7 o'clock. It's like waiting a half hour. I mean, I go through that light every day, and I didn't get a ticket yet, but there's nobody else, but it's a bad, it's a bad situation.
The timing on that is a state, it's a state control.
Yeah, you wait, you wait, well, is there any way we can get a hold of state town? Because like I said, a lot of people just go right through that light. Then the change is normally, you know, after, but we'll look into that. My next, my next one is on Resolution 167, Green Village Road School.
Yes.
I've been coming to quite a few meetings. I understand we're getting something like 10, 12 million dollars or something, not we, the Board of Ed, or whatever. My point that I'm getting at is that talking to many, many people in town and all that, I'm not alone on the suggestion that when they sell it and get the money, that this east wing would be an ideal place for the Board of Ed and the borough to get together under Wonder Bella. This way you can start sharing some services. It's a great idea, according to a lot of people. I got a lot of ways where we can save money, and not only that, maybe you've got room for the Board of Health to go over there, too. And we can rent that place down there. You know, I go to budget meetings, we talk about where we're going to put this money, whether it's electric or, let's try to, this year, try to figure out how we could save some money. You know, there's a lot of, like I said, there's a lot of ways we could cut the overhead, and that's the key. You know, I've been coming to quite a few meetings, but this is another thought from other people. You know, we come here, we give suggestions, we give recommendations, we give our opinions, but there's no dialogue. In other words, I look around, I see these six council people, I'd like to know how they feel about these ideas. You know, in other words, it's just you telling me or the lawyer, is there any way we could have a better dialogue? And, you know, and if I bring something up, let's talk about it. Like, for example, I don't know if, it was a beautiful ceremony Monday, but...
Right now, you're going off of things that are on the discussion agenda, but I...
You're right, but just one more thing, though, you're right, but Monday with the ceremony, did you just look at the front entranceway, how that granite is getting destroyed? It's terrible, this beautiful building, and something's got to be done right away. And I got some suggestions which you should do, because they've been doing it every five or six, 10, 10 years, so you got to fix it, but it's really bad. It's a shame. Thank you.
Thank you, and just, yeah, the plaza out front is on our list, and we certainly, that certainly needs attention sooner as opposed to later, and we will be looking at funding sources to take care of that. And as far as response, you know, dialogue, I would say that actions speak greater than words, and just to use an example of your suggestion a couple of years ago about reaching out to New Jersey Transit on the condition of the parapet along the King's Road. You know, you came here, you spoke, it was taken care of, and so that's how the dialogue works. And so we greatly appreciate yours and other residents' input on how we can do better in Madison. There we go. Anyone else wishing to be heard on the items on the agenda? Seeing none, I close this part of the agenda, and we move on to agenda discussions. First item is MAF Quarterly Financial Report. Representatives of MAF. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I apologize. Yes, I was, hold, yeah. If you, yeah, if you don't mind, Brenda, just stay a few more minutes and listening to our, what should have been listed as number one, and I switched it and missed it, is Green Village Road School Property Redevelopment. Let me just, a few comments to set this up and discussion, and then we have two resolutions that we will, if the council moves forward, will pass before we go to the consent agenda. So we've heard about this for quite a while, and tonight, this is a big step. This is not the finish line, but it is a major step we hope to see happen tonight. The borough will be executing necessary documents for redevelopment of Green Village Road School Site, and the council has selected local New Jersey firm, the KRE Group, to redevelop the property, working with an architect and Chatham resident, Dean Marchetto, redesigning the site, so someone that lives nearby and will not only design it, but will be seen on a regular basis. And what we'll see there in coming years is 135 residential units along with the restaurant and community space. This has been a different approach than what most people in Madison are used to. You hear about redevelopment in other locations, and you also often hear about how properties that belong to government entities are put out to auction. And the way this is done differently is it was a site in need of redevelopment. A school that's been closed for decades, had nothing to do with the fact that I attended school there, but it closed shortly after that, and that was a long time ago. The sale price, $12 million, go into the Board of Education. There'll be payments on an annual basis over $700,000 a year in a pilot when this is fully developed. Over $2 million will be paid to the borough for affordable housing obligation. The borough will receive 3,000 square foot community space, something that has been talked about being needed for our town, and that will be part of the redevelopment. And outside, there'll be 14,000 square foot of public space, also front on King's Road for use of public, for outdoor performances, art events, and the like. This will obviously affect our code fees, sewer connection fees. It is new customers for our electric and water utilities, and it's certainly a boost to our economy. And the fact that, though this is not designated as an official transit village, it may not have that traffic impact that other developments can, might have. It is steps away from Midtown Direct, and as people are looking for alternate places to live, it is a connection to the greatest transportation system in the state of New Jersey. It is steps away from our downtown, so it will certainly feed the economy of our downtown. And as I mentioned, will be designated KRE as our developer, and after the passing of these resolutions, that is step one, there's also ordinances that need to be passed. There's several steps that have to be taken to make this final, but we will sign the agreements in a few minutes, council willing, and we can move forward. A reminder on why you do redevelopment, it gives us far better control over what is put in the property through the planning process, selection of a primo developer, and selection of how the housing happens. That is exactly why we went through the redevelopment process. This was not an easy process. I don't know, how many years have we heard about, when is it going to finally be sold? It took the perseverance of many, including one sitting way back in the back row, Lisa Ellis, and I want to thank Lisa, and the leadership of the Board of Education, and Pat, when he was sitting at the other table, working very hard to this finish line, and our Subcommittee, myself, but especially Carmella Vitale and Bob Landrigan, who worked on getting us to where we are today. Our administrative team, Ray and Jim, your expertise and ability to get this through has been incredible. We can't even put a dollar sign on that. And our team of Greg Costano and Jim Bruno, our legal team, working on redevelopment documents. Thank you so much, Jim and Greg. And also, Greg is another person that's got extra ownership in this. He lives in Madison, so he's been keeping an eye on it as an attorney and a resident. And thanks to the residents of Madison for their patience and their understanding and the fact that this will be a project that will benefit all, the schools, the borough, and the residents of Madison. So it, this is a tremendous night and a tremendous first step in redeveloping that property. Ray, you want to talk, or let's bring Greg up and our, just a quick explanation of the resolutions that we have? Greg and Jim, rather.
The resolutions that are on the agenda tonight, the first one will be a designation of KRE's Urban Renewal Entity as the designated developer to be, to redevelop the site in accordance with the mayor's discussion of 135 units with restaurant, community space, public space for meeting and assembly. And the other item that'll be on the agenda in terms of the resolution, we're going to have also two ordinances. One is the, an ordinance introducing the Redevelopment Plan Amendment, so that the plan that's been designed and crafted by the planning board in concert with the developer will be implemented and brought to the planning board. Also, we'll have an ordinance authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with KRE Group. And the other resolution is authorizing the execution of the documents, such as the redeveloper agreement and the lease, and also the contract of sale with the Board of Education. Greg, you have any?
Yeah, I think as Mr. Cody described, the, those are the documents that have been prepared. Those are the documents that are going to enable the borough, give it the authority to enter into these agreements with the KRE Group, and that's going to be, as the mayor described, the first big step in getting the project off the ground. Those are the official legal documents that will start the process so we can move forward to getting the property developed. We've discussed a lot of them before. If anybody has specific questions, happy to answer them, but I think the council's been briefed, the mayor's been briefed, Your Honor, and I think Mr. Cody's given everybody full explanation as to what we intend to do tonight.
Questions, discussion, before we make a motion on the resolution?
Do you want to move it first, or you want to talk?
Well, if it's going to be a discussion on a particular resolution, we should move it first, if it's overall comments.
Overall.
Overall comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
I mean, I'm looking...
Well, it's, it's, it's an agenda discussion item, so that's what we normally would do when the resolution's coming off of that. So, Pat, go ahead, if you, if it's not a comment on the resolution in particular.
It's not on any specific resolution. I just wanted to just say thank you to everybody. I'm really thrilled that we're able to take this next step in turning the property into a valuable asset for the community. The partnership that was formed over five years ago between the borough and the Board of Education is truly unique to Madison, and I'd like to thank all the people who made it possible, including current former members of the governing body and board who've worked together on this since 2009, the administrative teams on both sides, but especially Ray and Jim, who, as you mentioned, have done fabulous work to get this to the finish line, our borough planner and the planning board for their assistance in this, our legal teams, and finally, the group that we're designating tonight, as well as the other developers who participated in this effort. There are a lot of issues to resolve, and getting two elected bodies and their council, plus a developer to agree on a very broad set of legal and financial issues, has been challenging, but everyone involved always approached us from the perspective of what's best for Madison, and that spirit helped get us through several challenging moments. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Pat. Anyone else with general comments before we move Resolution 167? Carmella.
Okay. It's a pleasure that I move Resolution 167, 2014, the Borough of Madison. Do you want me to read the, okay. Resolution designating KRE Madison, New Jersey Urban Renewal LLC as redeveloper of 33 Green Village Road and authorizing execution of a developer agreement and other documents.
Do I have a second?
And it's was the equal pleasure that I second that motion.
Council discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
I vote yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
May I have a motion for Resolution 168?
Resolution 168, 2014, Resolution of the Borough of Madison Transmitting amended Green Village Road Redevelopment Plan to the Planning Board for Review and Report pursuant to NJSA 40A:12A-7.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Council discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you, and congratulations. I'd like to invite Jeff Persky up here, Lisa Ellis. We've got some contracts to sign.
We got a special pen.
Hi, how are you?
We got a special pen.
Make sure he gets your pens.
We have a signature pen. How are you, sir? Mayor, do you want to have everyone standing behind you while he's here?
Congratulations.
Let council and the mayor and the board need to stand behind you and sign.
This is a dead, I don't know, down here on the daisies.
The resolution is referring to the...
I just want to reiterate what was said earlier at the council table. You know, we could never have done this without the help of Ray and Jim especially, and Greg and Jim Bruno. I know we presented a challenge from time to time, but we worked our way past that. We worked our way past this, and I have to just say to Mr. Powell that I think this is probably karma. I'm really happy that we're here and that it's KRE doing this development, and I'm just glad that we are finally here. I can't wait to see this built. Thank you all.
Before I pass the microphones to my left, I just want to also thank Lisa again, now that she's sitting next to me. It has been a pleasure working together to get to this point, and that should not be overlooked is the fact that we have set up a pilot that normally is set up in a way that the borough, local municipal, municipality takes 95% and 5% goes to the county, and the Board of Education would not get any of a pilot. We have worked with the Board of Education to make sure that we can ensure quality education for years to come by the sharing of this pilot. So I think that is something to be commended by, and maybe we'll see in other communities throughout this town. And to shift gears a little bit to quote the end of one of my favorite movies, I think this is the start of a great relationship.
Thank you, everyone, and my name's Jeff Persky, I'm from KRE, and we're very happy to be here, and we're very excited about this project. And I would like to thank, and I think we're going to work hard to make you all very proud of us and the project. I think we're going to try to bring something to Madison that everybody's going to thoroughly enjoy. I'd like to thank the mayor, Ellis, Ellis, the member, Lisa, the members of the council, Ray, Jim, from our side. Ray, Jim, from our side, we have, well, actually from your side, we have Jim Bruno and Craig who've worked endlessly, the Markovitzes who are partners in this with us, Dave Kahn and Bob Powell, and if I forgot anybody, I apologize. But this has been, Dean, I'm sorry, Dean's the architect, you already got his.
You're only the architect.
This, this project, I really think, will turn out to be a labor of love for all of us. It's a unique situation. I think it's probably the most, if not the most outstanding town in New Jersey. It's certainly up there as being the most outstanding town in New Jersey, and I think we're all looking forward to creating something that, again, everybody's going to be proud of, and we're, we're very excited to go. We're going to create a very vibrant and moving community. So we're, we're happy to be here. Thank you. Happy to have you.
What do you say we call it tonight? I think that's good enough. Actually, we've got a lot of more, a lot important work to do. Moving on to number two on our agenda, MAF Quarterly Finance Report. Brenda, you're now up.
I'd like to hear it.
Hello. That's enough, that's enough.
A few more. Nino Coviallo representing the Madison Athletic Foundation. This evening, we're bringing you up to date with our second quarter report. What's being passed around at the moment is just a quick synopsis of what's transpired in the last three months. We did have a 50/50 raffle on May 3rd. The winner was John Kovak of East Lane. Thank God it was someone from Madison. And the winner received approximately $33,000. For our end of the year 2013, 2014 annual appeal, we've raised over $30,000. We have secured seven new M Club donors, and to refresh your memory, the M Club are those individuals that have paid $3,500 towards the field, and their name is, it's manifested on the M Club wall that was built a few years ago. Soon, hopefully mid-July, we're going to have 15 new M Club plaques installed. If the mayor would come down, I'm going to give you another hug if possible.
No hug, I learned last time you don't like hugs. What, you want to come on?
It's that Irish blood in me.
Can I hug the classmate?
No.
We, please, report, Mayor, that you will be receiving a check for $100,000, which will go towards our 1,000, then we play. This will bring the MAF's balance down to 675. Hope I get a round of applause for donating.
Other than that, I think the handout is self-explanatory. I don't know if anyone has any questions. We plan, we continue to endeavor with our fundraising, and we hope to have several fundraising events which will kick off around Labor Day and then later in the fall. Any questions or comments for? Thanks very much for the report, and thank you for your effort on behalf of the residents of Madison. It's great to accept that check, Nick. Item three, electric rebate program. Ben?
Thank you very much, Mayor. As you may recall, and as part of the discussion regarding the budget this year, we allocated $100,000 in a rebate program, the 2014 Madison Electric Utility Rebate. Initially, as I mentioned earlier, was intended to be directed to senior citizens and those who are on disability. Having checked our records against, our records being records of people who are involved in state programs that are directed towards those who are in need financially, against the number of people in Madison who would be eligible for such programs, we discovered that we're extremely underrepresented. In other words, there are many more people in Madison who are eligible for these programs than who apply. Now, what we've done to lessen the administrative burden is we've required proof of enrollment in these, in one of these programs, and the programs are listed in both the potential announcement letter, a draft of it, as well as in the application form. Thinking now is, as we promote the electric utility rebate program, we'll also be promoting these programs because they do exist, and it's in the interest of our citizens to take advantage of it. We had talked earlier about the Project Freeze, and I, I'm hopeful that we have additional residents of Madison who become participants in that program for which they were eligible. The conditions we're imposing this time is that, and I say this time because this is for this year only, that total income in 2013 must, must have been no greater than $40,000. That the electric utility bill is in your, in, in your name where you live. In other words, you're not a resident of a home who's not the head of household, you are the head of household, and if you happen not to be, and indeed you share responsibility for this bill with someone else, and the combined income of the part, of the people who pay that bill should be no greater than $40,000, and you need to be a full-time resident of Madison. If you pass all of these requirements, then you will be rebated $100 against your electric utility bill. If that amount turns out to be greater than the amount of your bill in the, in any given month, then the amount, the remaining will carry over to the next month and be applied until $100 has been spent down against your bill. The program itself will be, in effect, run out of the borough clerk's office, i.e., that's where the form should be returned, and we also ask for additional information regarding proof of participation in the programs I mentioned earlier, as well as proof of income and your electric utility number, so that we can confirm that indeed your account number and you are the same person. And we, we know that there are approximately, and I say approximately because it's based on census data that is now a couple of years old, but there is approximately, there are approximately 1,400 households in Madison that are eligible. And if we give 100 to each, we will exceed the amount of money that we've allocated. We don't think that's even, I mean, based on experience with like programs that the state and county have offered our citizens. So, you know, I, I, I hope to be able to tell you all that we spent our $100,000 by allocating it to those in need, but as I say, this program very soon so that we can begin distribution of rebate checks in the third quarter of this year. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a great program. It's going to help a lot of people. Where can we get a synopsis of those requirements?
There will be a, a letter going out as part of the utility bill that will announce the program.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Pat?
Next. Kim, we've got a couple of questions. Have we calculated how much time and energy it's going to take to administer this? Because if it's wildly successful, 1,400 people come forward, even 15 minutes comes out to several, or at least a couple man months of time, even if they have to put 15 minutes in on this?
How did you do that calculation?
I know, first of all, I don't think that it's, well, let me start at the beginning. I've spoken to all the people who would take on this responsibility with the understanding of how many applications may indeed be forthcoming, and everyone felt that it was a manageable situation. One of the things I was very sensitive to and mentioned before is I don't want the administrative costs of the program to exceed the value of the program. And obviously, we're doing it for the first time. I hope what I said turns out to indeed be correct, and it's based on, on information that was given to me in good faith by people who will be doing this. It may well turn out that they've underestimated the amount of time, but we'll address that when it happens.
Okay. There may be startup time, but it's certainly the timing of this launch coincides with interns being on board too, as that may help support the launch.
I mean, it just seems like there's going to have to be several people who get involved with each person. Someone will have to take in the documentation, do the actual, I guess, verification of income and then one of these programs, and then they'll have to interact with the electric department to make sure that the credit is properly applied, and then I don't know how well our systems can handle 100, I guess, I hope they can take $100 credit and just apply it.
The system, I, I check that as well, and the systems are in perfectly good shape to do that, and the people who are responsible for sending out bills said they would have no trouble administering the program. I should also say that, I mean, you make it sound like a big deal. It's really quite easy. I mean, we're asking for people's name, address, age, their account number, and they have to show proof of their 2013 income, which presumably would be, not necessarily, but could be the first two pages of their tax filing. It may well be something else, and proof of their enrollment in one of several programs, which is typically a letter saying they're enrolled. I think if you were before me, you had those four pieces of information, I probably could do your, your account in a couple of minutes. And then we would just shoot that information at some point in the day up to our systems. It would be entered, and that would be the end of it. It would be done from there on in.
I mean, I took a kind of conservative estimate. I figured it'd probably take about, if you actually sat and followed through 15 minutes of, of total time, and if you took 1,000 people coming through, let's say we got the right number of people, 15 minutes is four an hour, so that's 250 hours divided by 40 hours is over six weeks of, of people time. If it, if it's as many as 1,400, it's going to be more than two months of, of somebody's time. And it's good that we have interns, but some of this is going to have to be done by the regular staff, so hopefully they'll have the time. So in the end...
Pat, if I may?
Sure.
I didn't do this glibly.
I understand that.
I researched it quite carefully.
Okay.
Spoke to the people who would be involved, as I mentioned earlier. Checked on the number of, some are interns who would be involved potentially, and I'm, I have no problem at this point saying that we're prepared for indeed, I don't believe 1,400, but if it happens, so be it, 1,400 applicants. My bigger concern at that point is I'd have to come back to you and ask for more money. But at this stage, it's, I, I don't, I'm not terribly concerned about that.
Okay.
So I did not take lightly, and, and I actually mentioned it on several occasions, that I was very concerned about the administrative costs of, of a program like this, and it was only after I realized that there were all these other programs that had already vetted people as to their income levels that I went ahead and proposed it.
Are we going to be keeping all the documentation on file here? Or are we going to give everything back to people after we certify it?
That is a question that is, that's a good question that actually I haven't thought about. I suppose we can give it right back to them.
Okay, only because it's, it's fairly confidential and sensitive information, so if we're going to hang on to it, we need to make sure it was a safe place to keep it. And again, 1,000 packets take up a bit of space.
I think there's certain documents that you're going to have to keep.
We got to keep the application.
The application. I think that, you know, income tax returns and things like that, we probably would not have to keep. But you would want to have enough verification so that when your auditor comes in, you know, there's some type of certification that the auditor, if they do spot check, they can say.
Right.
The income tax, et cetera, that we've satisfied it. So we do have to do that. The other thing too is, you know, when we sent out the letter, I think I've given you guys a disclosure that we'll go out with a letter indicating that, you know, if we're subject to NOPA request, we will.
Yes.
Do whatever we can in our power to redact any type of.
Right.
Personal identifying information. But there's certain documents, like, for example, when people go to schools to enroll their kid, they share documents with the district.
Mm-hmm.
Just to verify that they are a resident, they're domiciled in the district, et cetera. They can take those documents back as long as you have an official.
Right.
Who's made that assessment.
Okay. So your, your suggestion, I mean, just to clarify this, and it's, you know, it is a point, as I say, that I hadn't focused on. So we'd keep a, the, obviously, the application.
That's correct.
And a letter of proof of participation in one of these other programs?
Yeah, a letter of proof of participation, and then if we get a, an NOPA request, we can redact out their personal information.
Right.
And a letter of proof. But I, I think that Councilman Rose pointed about, you know, income tax returns, we don't need to keep that, as long as we have an official like Ms. Osborne who's verifying it and then documenting the verification with some type of an approval stamp that was approved for that, that year.
Yes.
I think that would satisfy, that would be all stored on the, on the application.
Fine. Thank you.
Do, do these different programs come with a, do you get a letter as a, as a resident that says you're participating in these? I mean, how do?
Whoa.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I gotta get used to looking right. Finish your, your thought there, Pat, and then we'll go to the side.
Do you actually get some sort of positive proof that you're participating in one of these programs if you're currently enrolled from this, by the state?
Yeah, the, the letters that, that, my understanding that we're going to be seeking is proof from the state that they have already been approved to participate in another program, correct?
That is correct.
So they've already been vetted by other programs that have similar type of rebating, et cetera, as one of the documents of proof.
Are we going to the state to ask for confirmation, or are they coming in with a letter, you know, that, that says I'm enrolled in this program and it's, it comes from the state with this, you know, a stamp or something?
Are you concerned about fraud?
Sure. $100,000.
$100?
$100,000.
$100,000.
For $5 when it comes to public money.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think.
But it's $100,000.
The bottom line is that, that if you're doing, you know, it's just, it's no different than in a school district. I mean, people can get fake driver's licenses and say that they live there. The point is, is that if you do your due diligence and collect the documents, and you're not just collecting the, their, their income tax form or their W-2, you're asking for, you know, a number of different sources so that you can verify and double-check it. And you can, what I would suggest is whatever document they're giving us from the state, if it's a letter that they're getting saying, "We should maintain that," and that's something that you could easily verify whether or not they're involved in it or not, and if somebody does commit fraud, that's why we have a police department, we go to them or the prosecutor.
Yeah.
So these are public dollars.
I, I just want to clarify, I'm, I'm not unconcerned about fraud. I just think that you ask someone to fill out information about themselves, which you can then check against their account, you, you see what their account is, how much they're spending on electricity. Obviously, if someone came in and asked for their $100 and they had the electric bill of several hundred a month, I think, you know, someone's antenna would go up. You have a proof of enrollment in the program and you have some proof of income, that's a lot of forgery for $100. That's my only...
So we don't get, yeah, the, the idea is, everyone is concerned about fraud and there's steps, and there's also far harsher penalties for fraud. Carmella?
Yeah. Okay. Let me just bring up a point. I, I've had many discussions with, with Donna, who is the supervisor. This is, this is what they're used to doing, okay? There, there's a nice list of people who are in various programs, okay? They already have the information that is given to them by the state. They're very versed in how they go about it. Today on, on, there were two rebates, unfortunately, two people who passed away, and they were in, in two of these programs, and the rebate has to go back to the state. So what I, what I'm saying is, is that these people already understand what to do with this process, and I, from what I've talked to them about, it's not a big problem. They actually are always concerned that more people in Madison do not, you know, take advantage of all of these programs because they understand some people have problems paying their bills, and they're very, very good about handing out documentation. paying their bills, and they're very, very good about handing out documentation and saying, hey, listen, here's an opportunity for you. I, I, I think, from what I understand, Maureen Byrne's Strategic Plan Group is, is trying to develop more communication for all of us out to the residents of Madison who don't know things about like this, or, you know, their fifteen dollars for their sidewalks and whatever. So that's all happening. There's gonna be more communication. One of the things I intend to do as, as Chair of the Senior Advisory Group is, these people are a great source of knowing other seniors or people who need help. And it's, I, I was very surprised at a conversation that I had with one senior is, they just feel that as long as they can manage, they'll take care of themselves. And that kind of makes me sad a little bit because this is the generation who made Madison what it is today, okay? A lot of them are still living here, they raised their kids here, and they're still staying here. So, you know, my, my intent is to bring it to the Senior Advisory Committee and talk to them and let them understand that if they're among the group that may need help, that there is help available to them. Anybody I've talked to has been thrilled to death about it. It's just getting them to the point that they feel comfortable with taking, that's how they look at it, taking a hundred dollars from this barrel. So, but I'm not concerned about that department in there. I, it's pretty well run. They're familiar with, with all of this, so, you know, hopefully, you know, it'll go very well. And I think it'll be looked at very carefully.
Thank you. Rob, and then Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No surprise that I'm in favor of lower electric rates, so I'm happy to see this. I'm also happy to see that it's a, it seems, it seems to be we're doing this on a truly needs-based method. My only concern is that the amount that we're giving away, that the administrative cost of it don't wind, wind up chewing up or, or being a large percentage of the actual award. So it's like when you give money to charity, you always look for the ones, you know, who donate whatever, ninety-seven cents on the dollar. So, that, that's why I would respectfully ask if we could get a better idea of what we think the, the true implementation costs would be, and if necessary, you know, we, we may need to, to jigger the numbers a bit, 'cause I think that, I think that the, the money we put aside or rebates should include the cost of the, of the program. I, I think that there's a, it seems, just listening to what everyone's saying, there's a decent amount of fraud prevention here, which I think is important as well because it is public money. But, you know, if it were me, I'd give everybody a break, but I'm, I'm happy that we're doing this on a needs-based, needs-based basis. But I would like to see maybe for the, for the secondary or the thing that we eventually approve, somehow if we can roll in what we think the cost will be. And I'm sure our, our town employees, you know, say yes, they'll do it because by and large they're a go-getter sort of group, and they like challenges and they'll, they'll make it work, right? But I think we need to act, if we can, we need to accurately reflect that cost in the amount of money we set aside for this program. Thank you.
Just, we'll, we'll come back over there in just a second, just clarification. So costs for the program will fall into two categories. One would be a shift of priority, so it's not a new cost, additional cost to the borough, but it's time spent on the program, but it's actually not time out, so we, we'd have to figure that out just to, just so we know. But also, I would say the process is to figure out what the cost is, because it's the first year versus what will be the ongoing cost, so we can work, work that through.
Absolutely right, and we all know how busy our town employees are, so this is just adding incremental burden to their workday. And like, you know, so if you're gonna spend fifteen minutes doing that, you're not spending fifteen minutes doing something else.
Yeah.
Just, I think we, you know, I think lower electric rates are good. I think helping people that need help is a good thing. Especially, you know, especially with the, in this forum, I would just like to see a sort of a whole estimate so that we can carve out that money to cover it.
Okay. And then we'll come back over to the side.
No, I, I like this program, and I don't wanna take away from the good it's gonna do by focusing too much attention on the administrative costs. And here's where I think it'll probably play out. When it's first rolled out, you're gonna probably get a bump of people coming in. And upfront, it, it may take a few minutes until people get used to the process. But I'll wager, as time goes on, it's just going to be absorbed into the normal workday, and it'll be very hard to determine actually how much time is being spent on this work. I mean, you could come up with numbers about, well, this application took this much time, but the reality of it is, most of the employees here will just say, okay, I have a few minutes now, just take care of it. I think it's gonna be a challenge to really come up with a, a dollar amount for the administrative part of this project, just like most of us at our jobs. You know, you're given something extra to do, you do, you absorb it in your normal daily work, work routine. Unless it's something out of the ordinary, and it's gonna be, and it really shows that it's gonna be too much, I don't think it's gonna be that much of an issue.
Ben, you had your...
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, obviously, this is not scientific, but off the top of my head, if we'd use an intern for this job, which we've talked about as probably the case, and I believe we pay interns nine dollars an hour, if Ms. Councilman Rowe is correct that it will take fifteen minutes, I'm, I would think it would take fair, less, but I'll go with fifteen. That will cost about two dollars and twenty-five cents per applicant. I really am reluctant to suggest that rather than give people a hundred dollars, we give them ninety-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. So, I, I appreciate their administrative costs. I think at most they're gonna be negligible, and I think we're, there are lots of things we do for our residents, rightly so, that incur additional time from our employees, and we don't charge for that. If we're gonna start, that's fine. This is not the group to do it with.
Rob?
And just again, for the record, no one ever suggested we pay them less. What was suggested was that we move incremental money over to cover the cost, to keep with this. And, you know, for the record, we could, we could not worry about administrative costs. We gave everybody an electric rate cut, we just lowered the rates. We decided not to do that.
So to, to move this forward, we have Resolution 165 on the consent agenda. We could have administration look at the potential administrative costs of this program and come back, and if we need to have a resolution to, to cover those costs, we can do that at a future meeting. And as I pointed out, it's to look at the cost in several ways. If, are there actual additional costs because people have to put extra hours in? Is it a shift of priority cost? And then sift, sifting through is what were the costs related to the startup program versus what we'll be looking at in 2015 and beyond as people just do renewals? So, administrate, is that, is that, okay. Pat, yeah?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say one final thing. I, you know, for the last year, I've been pushing for a, an across-the-board electric rate cut, although I appreciate what this is gonna do. I, I actually feel it's gonna be undersubscribed. I think it's, the cost is gonna be fairly insignificant because we're not gonna see anywhere near a thousand people sign up for this. So I would continue to advocate that we take a hard look at, at what point do we think we can really provide an electric rate for the entire population? Because many of the people who we wanna help here, I think are not gonna take advantage of this if, as Councilman Catalinello said, if we were doing it across the board, we would catch everybody.
I, I think we, this council did make a promise that this fall in anticipation of 2015, after our first summer with, under the new contracts, that we will make sure we review the rates and come up with a rate structure that makes sense for the, the borough and the market. So that's, we will, I will, I will pledge, and I know you will pledge, that will, that will not fall off the list. All right, so that's the Resolution 165, and we have some to-do items related to that. Let's move on to discussion number four, amending chapter ninety-four, Borough Code and Title Electric Utility to amend Appendix B payment of water and electric bills.
One of the things I've been working with the supervisor of electric, the electric and water collections, is coming up with a procedure regarding shut-off notices. We, we've had a lot of delinquencies that we've been trying to work through, but during, during that whole process, we realized that there really was not anything structured about how to allow people to know that they are being shut off. If you look at, if you look at the, the packet, one of the, there's utility delinquent procedures, and it starts, starts off by a green card, it goes to a yellow card. I, I think that one of the things that I've talked to Donna about is that in, in this day and age, you know, all of these yellow cards, green cards, and whatever, but it's all we have right now, okay? One of the things that we also realized is that, that we did not have a reconnection fee. So, in order for the resident tenant to get power restored, they must pay a hundred dollars reconnection fee plus fifty percent of the past due amount. In order for business commercials to get power restored, they must pay two hundred and fifty dollars for a small business, five hundred dollars for a large business commercial reconnection fee, but twenty percent of the past due amount. What we're trying to do here is that it, it takes a lot of people. You know, you have, your meter readers going out and delivering these, after these people have gotten delinquent notices, that there's very, these various cards to say, you're going to be, you're going to be turned off and whatever. Then you have the electric department going out and pulling the meters, and then those people show up after they realize they have no electricity and they pay part of their bill, and then the electric department has to go back out. It, it seems that, you know, in, in a day and age that we worry about, and, and Pat, you were just talking about administration and, and fees and whatever, you know, there's, there's a better way. And unfortunately, it costs a lot of money to reconnect, to disconnect, and whatever. So we want to amend this ordinance to show that reconnection fee. It's, it kinda goes on about, you know, what, the, the original ordinance really did not make a lot of sense about the water and electric bills, you know, how they were aged, what the annual, annual interest rate was, what the account balance should be, et cetera. So I think that this is a pretty good start. One of the things that you'll note is that the borough of Madison will only disconnect Monday through Thursday. This gives people an opportunity to come in and make sure that their bill is paid. Grace period is between October thirty-first and May one. There are no disconnections because I believe that's state statute, right? Right? Yeah. Also, we were also concerned about people who actually may need medical help, so we're working on a letter right now that'll be going out, asking for that information, that if someone needs oxygen or whatever, and they're delinquent in their account, we're, we're gonna be very concerned about that part of it. But I, I think this amending, this, this chapter is probably long overdue, and hopefully it'll start working.
Comments, questions? So we have the outline here, and we'll come back with a ordinance revision. Pat?
Thank you, Carmella. You actually did answer the one question I had about people who have health issues and absolutely need electric and water. Is there a reason why everything has to be hand-delivered? Is that, is there a state statute on any of this?
No, I, I don't see any reason, but it's the only way we have right now. Donna and I have kinda really talked about it. These people actually get delinquent notices. If you're a tenant, your landlord gets a delinquent notice, but there's a lot of people who choose to ignore, you know, this particular, these particular bills, you know.
But clarification, the delinquent notices are mailed, it's the shut-off.
Yes. The shut-offs are the only thing.
Yeah, no, I see that.
Right.
I was reading through this. The, the other question is, electric is probably relatively easy to do, 'cause I think you just pull the meter, but the water, I guess you have to...
Water, we can't because it's a health issue.
Shut out the street.
So we don't shut off.
Oh, we don't, oh, this strictly applies to shutting off electric? Okay.
There's a health issue, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought this covered both.
Yeah, there's less problems with water. And Donna has a tendency, you know, if she gets a lump sum of money, what she does, she will spread it out to electric and water, you know, to kinda get both of those, those bills down.
Okay. The other question I had was about thirty days. That seemed just a little short. I guess it becomes only delinquent at that point, okay. How much after it becomes delinquent, does it actually get shut off? Not sure I ever saw that. In other words, if I, if I haven't paid, how many months before you actually will shut me off?
Well, I, I think...
It's normally a dollar figure, and our, our general barometer is for residential properties, a thousand dollars. But we look at special circumstances. Are there children in the home? Are there medical issues? Did somebody lose a job? The collector normally reaches out to the person, and most of the residents come in and explain their situation, and we try to work with them. Unlike a traditional utility, because it's provided by a public body, we have a lien on the property. So our collection rate is like ninety-nine point nine percent. We collect our money because if the resident doesn't pay or the tenant doesn't pay, the owner of the property has to pay, or we have a lien on the property. So unlike private utilities, their only remedy is to shut services. We can be a little more flexible with our residents, and we try to be. Commercial, we take a little harder line, and if it's, irregardless of the amount, if it's delinquent sixty days or more, we start getting more progressively aggressive because those are bigger bills and they, they dig a bigger hole faster.
Say a thousand dollars for a resident could be half a year or more. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, in some cases it is. Yeah, in some cases it is. The commercial is astounding sometimes. You know, we're, we're talking, because their bills are, are quite high, sometimes like three thousand dollars a month. So, you know, you, you become three months in arrears, and, you know, your nine thousand, or four months is twelve thousand dollars. It's a lot of money.
And we bill, not quite two million dollars a month between the, actually between the two. What percentage of our billing is in arrears ninety days or more at any given time?
Probably less than three percent.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we manage, we have a twice-a-month delinquency meeting, target the, the ones that have hit that threshold, and then contact them directly, personal visits, and usually funds start to come in, threatened with curtailment of service.
So we'll take these procedures and ones that need to, part of the procedures that need to go into revised ordinance will...
They are in, they are in already, yeah.
All right. Move on to next couple ones, or the rest of the discussion agenda, all involves Bob Vogel, I believe. So come on up. Let's take the first two, which is items five and six on the agenda, both related to sewer, sewer lining improvements, appropriating a hundred fifty thousand, and also appropriating seventy-five thousand for emergency sewer construction at Madison Avenue, Wanaka Terrace. And these are, okay. Bob?
Oh, sure. Good evening, everyone. The first agenda recommendation for the hundred fifty thousand of general capital for sewer lining is a ordinance request. It follows work that was done in two thousand and eight for sewer lining in the North Street Sewer Service Area. This follow-up program is intended to do more easement work, work that is difficult for the sewer department to access through backyards, and has a lot of root intrusion, and there's been some priorities put on the list by the sewer department, which we wanna address in the short term. And I believe it's consistent with the budget because it combines not only the sewer lining item with the video item, because the contractor, when we select him, will do both. He'll do both videotaping and lining of the sewer service at the same time, so it combines those budgetary line items. So it is consistent with the budget. If there's any questions?
Any question on those two items? So those are, two ordinances are listed. And we're gonna go on to the signalization improvement, thirty thousand.
Unless you wanted to talk quickly about the DOT, Mayor. The second agenda item that we talked about, which is number six, deals with a, an impending, Councilman Catalinello had mentioned there was a twenty-one day notice from DOT. From the time I, I sent him the, the, the rundown of engineering items at eleven o'clock this morning to now, the DOT has updated that notice with a seven-day notice. So now they're gonna show up on Monday.
[laughing]
Which enhances the emergent nature of this project. The storm sewer that we need to put between Vinyl Road and Luanica Terrace is something which prevents water from traveling across the state highway at the Luanica Terrace location, because the road wasn't crowned right when it was first paved by DOT. And I've tried to appeal with, through the permits process with DOT, that, "Look, this is a problem that you created in part and haven't dealt with, and I need time to get it remediated before you final pave Madison Avenue." So those negotiations are tenuous and ongoing, but again, doesn't change the fact of the matter that we have an emergent storm sewer issue that really ought to be completed as soon as possible. And the police department and my department has been trying to work with DOT, and their planning division to buy some time. We're going to need about two weeks to get this done, but we do have a contractor lined up and ready to go for this work, if you so authorize. Again, there was no budget item for this, it's inconsistent with the budget, and I would call it an emergent action at this stage of the game.
If we don't do it now, it's going to be quite a while.
We've lost opportunity for another 15 years.
My other question related to storm and 124 is Madison Avenue and King's Road, where you have the ice sheeting problem across King's Road, and even, you know, three days after a rain, there's still water coming across there. Is there anything we can do on that issue at this time?
Again, working with the DOT's been a challenge. However, we do know De La Pella contractors that DOT has hired to do the work, and we can work with them directly to try to crown the road and surface certain locations, such as Luanica Terrace. And I would basically walk past DOT's representatives and deal directly with the contractor if we could, there are minor modifications to make, and there's no reason we can't get it done. So we'll make every attempt to do so, Mayor.
All right. And the $30,000 for a signalization?
Okay, this is a, should be relatively familiar. General Electric, again, is the Morris County Cooperative purchasing contractor for signalization improvements in the county. So we are going to select them to do not only preventative maintenance items, but signalization upgrades at various locations. They've already quoted these numbers, and so there's no estimating involved in terms of the work that's required, and covers both items, and I believe is consistent with the budget as well. So I just move that we should move forward with this and start the appropriation.
All right. Before we take the last two, I apologize, because we have the chief and several officers here, and so please, come on up, let's talk about Prospect and Woodland. We just wanted to have a little update, and I apologize, should have brought you up sooner. And it's a combination with engineering and public safety, so... So give us a little update on why this issue has come up. They were talking about the intersection of Prospect and Woodland, and what the steps we're taking, and we'll be taking.
In the past several weeks, we've had two serious motor vehicle accidents at the intersection of Prospect and Woodland, controlled by a stop sign. We did some research, in the past approximately four years, we had eight accidents there, six of which, you know, pretty much dealt with it with the stop sign. So what we did to try to remediate this situation is we changed the two stop signs. We put up more reflective, more modern stop signs with the reflective posts. We raised the canopy of the vegetation approximately 450 feet, which is from Weinhurst up to Prospect Street. We changed the stop-ahead sign. We put our message board out immediately after the second accidents, just to alert citizens to reduce speed on Woodland Road. We increased our presence in the area, motor vehicle stops, trying to enforce that stop sign, and also the speed limit on Woodland Road. We do have a meeting set up with residents of that area later on this week to discuss, you know, what can be done. Also, we discussed with Mr. Vogel, certain engineering things that can be done, maybe to the intersection, to increase the visibility.
And that includes where contractor coming in later this week to do some striping?
Traffic calming.
Yep. So I want to step back to the mic, Bob, and just quickly talk about what the traffic calming, striping will do.
When I found out from the police, there was another accident at that location. Obviously, I went up and worked with them and looked, had a good look at the intersection. You know, the stop bars and paint on the street, I thought the stop signs were quite good when I arrived. And so before this accident, the stop signs were all quite visible to my eye. It's noticeable that even with emergency personnel in the street, you get residents or people coming through the intersection without a whole lot of caution. And so, you know, we thought that traffic calming measures might, as they've worked at other locations in town, might be appropriate to put at this intersection as well. Obviously, there's more with the state delegating certain traffic improvements to local engineers for decision-making. There's more options available to us than there ever was before. And so moving forward, I think some of these traffic calming measures, including signage and striping on the road, would be useful to implement at this location, and with the hope that, you know, we can stop short of signals in the road, which are time-consuming for people to stop and wait at, and also pretty expensive to implement, so...
And it's a long process with the state, also.
I think the traffic calming measures, short-term, is the best way to go, and we've contacted statewide striping, who said they'd do the signage and striping for us this week if we requested it. And so we're going to move forward with that, if it's reasonable with everyone.
Yep. Sounds good. So a lot of steps taken, and we'll review it. And as Chief pointed out, there'll be a neighborhood meeting, so we'll communicate directly with the neighborhood. Anything else that needs to be added, or any questions from the council on the steps that are being taken?
Starting New Jersey DOT, we've had a little bit of a difficult time communicating with them. We've established several meetings that have been canceled, so we're trying to do the best for our residents and businesses in getting what their plan is for the Route 124 project, but it's been very difficult. A perfect example was the Madison and Community. I have alerted DOT to that signal issue, whether it be the, we call it the loop, it needs to be fixed. And it's a very difficult task communicating with New Jersey DOT. We have a meeting scheduled on Friday in Morris Township. The only reason why the police department, the traffic safety bureaus of the Morris Town, Morris Township in Madison, police departments were invited to the pre-construction meeting at the North Jersey DOT office was because of the contractor. So we do have a great working relationship, the contractor who has won the bid for the construction project is a very good contractor. So we do have a, you know, good relationship with the contractor.
Thank you for all your effort on that. Thank you very much, and thank you for the quick action.
I'm not sure if they mentioned mayor or not, but there's a Friday meeting with the residents at the Prospect intersection as well.
Yep. We're going to go on to item number nine before we do number eight, which is appropriation of $200,000 from general capital improvement for mill and overlay of various roads.
Originally, in the budget, we had $75,000 to do division in woodland for mill and overlay projects. Subsequent to that, actually, no, prior to that, we had talked about adding curbing in various locations, we were expecting to do mill and overlay, and the curbing prices were quoted by David Mainz and Cooperative Pricing Contractor, GGR, I believe, was the name of the contractor. And they had quoted us another $50,000 or $60,000 worth of cost for the curbing. So we added that onto the amount of this appropriation request. And also, through the winter, and obviously through multiple projects for roads such as Lincoln Place, and building improvements such as Stop and Shop, and the Happy Puppy, and everything else that's going on on Prospect Street, Prospect Street's really taken a beating between King's Road and Main Street. And so the request was put out that we add that segment of Prospect Street to the overall request for funding for mill and overlays for this year. One of the reasons I would say that it's probably a reasonable proposal for us this year is that the 2014 Road Improvement Program, which is the reconstruction program, which Sofeli started this week on Academy Road, that contractor well underbid the budget, and I believe at the end of the summer, will have the ability to balance the costs and shift some of those costs where we had got a very good bid price on a reconstruction program to the mill and overlay program to the benefit of Madison's residents. And that's the reason that it's really not consistent with the original budget request, the $200,000 versus the 75 that was originally put into the budget. You know, my request at this point is, is basically, we'll be able to unencumber a significant amount of money from the reconstruction program by the end of the summer, and if we can dedicate that money towards the mill and overlay program, I think we can certainly get more work done on the same dollar cost at the end of the year.
So you are, just a quick translation, basically you're saying budget neutral. It is, that you see $125,000 of surplus from the reconstruction that gets moved over, added to the 75,000, which is why this ordinance is not for 75, but for 200.
That is correct, Mayor.
Ben?
Yeah, the one thing I'm not clear about is if you go back and you say 75 was the starting point, where is the incremental 125? That's not at all Prospect, is it?
No, no, no. The incremental was the addition of curbing to the mill and overlay program. So that, it turns, it's kind of more like a reconstruction project, but it's all being done on the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council's charts. And so we pulled the curbing price from there, got their contractor out to take a look at the scope of work, and he said, "Well, altogether, you have, you know, 1,500 feet of curbing, and it's, the prices add up." So...
And divisions was mentioned as well in this, right?
That's correct. Division's part of the program.
And initially, division was next year's project?
No, we've been trying to get, actually, division done in cooperation with Chatham Borough, because...
Right, I remember that.
The Borough line runs down the middle for several years now, so I thought it was intended to be for this year.
It was, okay. Good.
Bob, and then Pat?
Yeah. Question, the roads, you can do the curbing, do they currently have curbing?
No.
So this is going to be in addition to what's already there?
This will be new curbing where none exists right now. And that'll be a drainage improvement for the road, and a lot of things were talked about.
And what roads are these exactly that you're going to put the curbing on?
Division and Union Hill.
Division and Union Hill.
Pat, and then Rob?
So in the original capital budget, there was $50,000 for division. Was that our share, or was that the total project cost to be split with Chatham?
That should have been, just for mill and overlay, that should have been about the total project cost. So we should be getting 15,000 to 20,000 back from Chatham at the end of the summer as a result of that.
And Union Hill, we actually had on last year, but Prospect didn't appear on this list anywhere, I guess...
That's correct.
After even walking in this past weekend, it definitely needs to work.
Try taking a bicycle on that.
Prospect's about 12, 13 years old at this stage of the game. Nowhere near the five-year program if you time it out for 20 years, but the downtown is taking a real beating.
And I just realized, I was looking through this list, and I was looking for Prospect to see what the total was, and it just wasn't here. But having seen it this past weekend, it definitely needs to work, so. So we're basically going from just mill and overlay on two streets to mill and overlay on four, and curbing on how many of them?
On two, correct.
On two of them, okay.
Rob?
My questions are satisfied.
Okay. Ben?
Again, point of clarification, division is going to cost us $25,000? That's division from King to Main?
About 30. Should be about 30 for mill and overlay, yes.
All right, good.
It's a good price.
Yeah, it does, it seems like a very good price.
Actually, the last question is for Ray. So since we're using money that was already allocated to, as part of the 1.6 million, do we have to formally recapture part of that in order to pay for this?
No, we have available dollars in the general capital improvement fund, so what we're doing is taking funds out of the general capital improvement fund. I think what Bob is saying is that we'll have extra money from the road reconstruction program to go back and to reimburse the general capital improvement fund when we saddle up with Sofeli.
Well, we'll need to, yeah, we don't need to recapture, because we have the money available. What we do need to make sure doesn't happen, because the ordinance was written, for the reconstruction was written in a way that we could add more roads to reconstruction without a new ordinance, is don't spend that money twice. So we've now shifted that 125, we will retire that ordinance at the year-end, freeing that 125, which offsets the overspend on the mill and overlay ordinance.
Okay, well, I guess my question is, legally, are we allowed to authorize this $200,000 and actually get up to the 3.5 million we authorized for the entire year, given that this was only supposed to be 75, without having first...
As long as you have sufficient funds available in capital budget, you can do that.
But when you say capital budget, do you mean in our capital fund, or the...
General capital improvement.
The capital budget process is just advisory to establish priorities. It's not binding until you appropriate the money, so...
You have dollars allocated, it's not a problem.
Soon as the final payment and change order is done with a general contractor like Sofeli at the end of the summer, then that money becomes unencumbered and freed up.
All right, so that's ordinance 36, 2014. And what we're going to do is we're going to take discussion item eight, which I'm going to step away from the dais, stretch my legs for a second, because that relates to a partnership with YMCA. Can we, after this discussion, go right into the introduction of that ordinance and do that one separately? So we can, you just will, so Bob, you'll cover the discussion, and then go right into introduction of the ordinance, which is 32-2014. And Astrid Belli, as a YMCA board member, also has to recuse herself.
Right. Do I need to leave the table right now?
Yes, you do.
Ben? Ben?
You can stay in the room.
You can sit down, you just can't participate or say anything.
Okay. Item eight is amending ordinance 34, 2013 of the Borough of Madison's code, appropriating additional funds for the general capital improvement for the repair of the East Street parking lot.
The bids came in, we had a good showing of good contractors two weeks ago, and the East Street project obviously was designed and bid using staff in-house. We had appropriated $100,000 last year to cover the cost of the project. The lowest bid came in at $114,000, and the grouping was relatively tight, indicating there wasn't a whole lot of discrepancies between the three apparent low bidders, which indicated the plans and specs were relatively good. And so I believe you're not going to, you can't expect to get a better price than $114,000 for the project, even if it was redesigned to rebid, unless scope was taken out of it. And the lowest apparent bidder was Stan Zial, who we've obviously checked through. They have not worked for the Borough before, but there was a great number of adjoining towns where they have done work on a satisfactory level. And in fact, the engineers that I talked to in those towns were enthusiastic about Stan Zial's work ethic and experience. And I talked to Stan Zial in person and said, they told me they would have no problems getting the work done within 45 days, which is a relatively tight timeframe for us, but again, a small project for them, being a single parking lot, not multiple roads. And so, you know, it'd be my recommendation that we move forward with an award of contract after we add the appropriation of $20,000 onto the request. And so the ordinance should be amended, and then we can award the project at the next meeting.
And the Y is reimbursing, can you...
Yeah.
The YMCA, which is why the mayor recused himself, and Astrid recused herself, is reimbursing 80% of the total project cost, because it's a shared parking lot for the Kirby Childcare Center and for our recreational fields that are adjacent.
Y maintains the 80% share of the entire project, which is excellent for us.
So it's an additional $4,000 to the Borough, this request, and we're going to get a higher level project.
Ben?
Just a quick question. You had said the lowest bid was 114, which we accepted?
No, they just submitted the bids. We don't accept them.
Just submitted it?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're asking for 120 to cover, just to be sure?
Only because the cost of reproduction, the plans and specs and everything like that was already taken out of the $100,000 ordinance, Ben, and so there's certain soft costs that are already part of history.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, and I think the mayor now wants us to go to the actual...
Introduction of the ordinance?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. This is ordinance 32, 2014.
Introduction of the ordinance, okay. This is Ordinance 32, 2014. It's scheduled for first reading. It has a hearing date for Monday, June 23. It'll be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public. Ordinance 32, 2014 is an ordinance in the Borough of Madison amending Ordinance 34, 2013 appropriating $100,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the East Street parking lot to increase the appropriation from $100,000 to $120,000.
Council President Landrigan, I move Ordinance 32-2014.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Bollard?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
And we're all set?
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay.
Get him back in here.
We'll go back to, here comes the mayor.
Now, just run with it.
Ordinance is for hearing, yes.
Okay, ordinance for hearing. Clerk, please read the statement.
The ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on a first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on Monday, May 12, 2014. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up the ordinances for second reading. Ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title, and just will quickly say that we'll do as we did with previously grouping together the summer ones for capital projects. So right now, we'll call up Ordinance 24-2014.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 185 entitled vehicles and traffic of the Borough Code to delete certain parking restrictions on Green Avenue at Woodland Road.
I open the hearing for Ordinance 24-2014. Anyone in the public wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 24-2014.
I second it. Council discussion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
No.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. I declare Ordinance 24-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And I ask the clerk to read ordinances 25 to 28 by title.
Ordinance 25, 2014. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $33,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a records management system, RMS, and computer-assisted dispatch CAD system for the police department.
Mayor, I move-
We're, we're-
We're going to combine them, then allow people to comment on each one of them.
I knew that, but she seemed to hesitate.
I hesitated, my fault.
It's time to jump in.
Stick up for yourself.
I'm trying to move this along.
Right, you're leaving opening and someone's going to jump in. Sorry. Ordinance 26.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $30,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a vehicle and related equipment for the police department. Ordinance 27, 2014. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $6,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of video surveillance equipment for the police department. Ordinance 28, 2014 is ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $2,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of portable surveillance equipment for the police department.
I open the hearing for ordinances 25 to 28, all ordinances related to capital purchases for the police department. Anyone wishing to comment on these ordinances, please step forward, state your name and address. And seeing none, I close the hearing and ask for a motion on Ordinance 25-2014.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 25-2014.
I second it. Council discussion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. I declare Ordinance 25-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now ask for a motion for Ordinance 26-2014.
I move Ordinance 26-2014.
I second it. Council discussion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
No.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. I declare Ordinance 26-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And I ask for a motion on Ordinance 27-2014.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 27-2014.
I second it. Council discussion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. I declare Ordinance 27-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And I ask for a motion on Ordinance 28-2014.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 28-2014.
I second it. Council discussion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. I declare Ordinance 28-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now ask the clerk to read ordinances 29 and 30.
Ordinance 29, 2014. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $60,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of new sump pumps for the sewer department. Ordinance 30, 2014. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $40,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for sewer pump station upgrades.
I open the hearing for ordinances 29 and 30 related to capital improvement funds for the sewer department. Seeing no one, I close the hearing and ask for a motion on Ordinance 29.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 29-2014.
I'll second.
Council discussion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. I declare Ordinance 29-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now ask for a motion on Ordinance 30-2014.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 30-2014.
I'll second.
Council discussion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. I declare Ordinance 30-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And can we read Ordinance 31, 2014 by title?
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 195 Land Development to revise the Borough's conditional use standards for drive-through restaurants.
I open the hearing on Ordinance 31-2014. Seeing none, I close the hearing and ask for a motion.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 31-2014.
I second it. Council discussion. Rob?
Thank you.
And then Ostry?
Um, I noticed that neighboring towns have seen chain coffee shops open up facilities with drive-throughs. Would these regulations apply to that as well? Are they considered restaurants?
As food, they would be considered-
Yeah, if a food establishment applies to any drive-through food establishment. So if you have Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts, they would all be applied to this drive-through.
What about like a drugstore that sells food through their drive-through window?
It's a food establishment. This is designed for food establishments with awnings, with the, if you notice, there's the setbacks dealing with the microphones when you're having-
Yes.
It doesn't disturb the peace. It's a little different than, I think, some of the Walgreens, et cetera, have the, it's almost like a bank teller thing where you drop to the window and you can pick up your prescriptions. That would not be applicable in this.
Thank you.
Ostry?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, as Planning Board representative, that we have for several years wanted to update the CC Zone ordinance. It's been a long time. It was written a long time ago. We are looking at the standards and criteria for the CC Zone, and we need to make sure these ordinances serve Madison well. And so this is why I support Ordinance 31-2014 tonight. Thank you.
And this was reviewed by the Planning Board as and verified consistent with the master plan.
Correct.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. I declare Ordinance 31-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we're on the second of two invitations for discussion, where anyone in the audience may come up and comment on anything. But please, keep your comments to three minutes or less, state your name and your address, and write the same on the clipboard. Come on up.
Nancy McManus, 34 Midwood Terrace, and I am on the corner of Midwood and Prospect. And first, I'd like to thank the police officers. You have been absolutely wonderful. Officer Ripka's not here today, but he has been very helpful and supportive. You could have a flashing dancing stop sign at Prospect, and it would not do anything. The people who are running the stop sign know it's there. It is with the intention of using Midwood Terrace as a cut-through to avoid the light at Green Avenue. It really has become an untenable situation. I know that we have the town meeting, the neighborhood meeting, and I do have ideas that I will put forth there. But understand, there will be a child killed on that block. The stop sign at Prospect is bad. The stop sign at Midwood and Prospect is run 99% of the time. I have almost been hit. I have been hit stopped at that stop sign with people cutting it close, making the left onto Prospect. They are saving time. They are aggressive. They are dangerous. And the accidents are getting worse and worse. When it's a child, I have a feeling we'll step up as a community, and there'll be flowers at the site. We have to do something before that.
Thank you, Nancy, for sharing your input. And we will, thankfully, our police department is still here, and as we prepare for that meeting on Friday, not only look at the intersection, but yes, you are correct about how Midwood Terrace is used. Anyone else in the audience? Tim, come on up.
Is the ninth enough time for the hearing? The ninth isn't enough time on the introduction of ordinances.
Right, it's 23rd, right, right.
Tim Harrington, Zucro Skates Road. A little humor tonight. I guess we're going the most humorous ones. I think public urination is a law violation in every town. Be nice if we, at the recreation fields, could provide the baseball players with something besides the woods to go to. It's impossible for them to get to the bathroom from the dugouts, and there's urination going on in the woods. God forbid if they have diarrhea. It's a problem easily addressed, and I would recommend it's addressed. Secondly, it's also a dead issue, but we're now about 20%, as you know, above the going rates for kilowatt-hour electricity, whether you're dealing with national grid and public service. If it were on the tax return, at least a lot of people would be getting a tax deduction from it. When it's buried in the electric bill, they don't. For those who are fat cats, they don't have to worry about their ITO deduction because they get phased out, or the alternative minimum tax gets them. So that doesn't matter. Thirdly, the Green Village redevelopment project is now going on longer than the start and stop of the Iraq War and the Second World War. It'd be nice if we'd finally get off our duff and get it done. West Hartford did a project at least as nice as what we saw tonight, and much larger, and at a lot faster time. And you can go on the internet to look at it. And I think on that note, I'll let you all go.
Thanks very much, Tim.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing that, I close this part of the meeting.
Okay.
And we're on to introduction of ordinances.
Okay, once again. Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for Monday, June 23. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Okay.
We already didn't yet.
Orderance 32 has been introduced. Ordinance 33, 2014. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $150,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for sewer lining improvements.
We're doing them one at a time? We're not grouping?
Yeah.
Sure. Mayor, I move Ordinance 33-2014.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 34, 2014. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $75,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for emergent storm sewer constructions on Madison Avenue between Lewanica Terrace and Vinyl Place.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 34-2014.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 35, 2014. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $30,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for signalization improvements.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 35-2014.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 36, 2014. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $200,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for milling and overlay on various streets.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 36-2014.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. Yep, we've got the-
The attachment's okay.
Ordinance 37, 2014.
I have it here? Sorry.
New white paper.
Let me bet she gave it. I gave everyone else a dated copy and didn't give myself one. I apologize. Okay, 37, 2014 is an ordinance authorizing the Borough of Madison in the County of Morris, New Jersey to enter into a financial agreement with KRE Madison, New Jersey Urban Renewal LLC for property at 33 Green Village Road designated as Block 3001, Lot 8.
I have a motion.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 37-2014.
I'll second.
Council discussion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz? Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
And ordinance 38, 2014 is an ordinance of the Borough of Madison adopting an amended redevelopment plan in accordance with NJSA 40A:12A-7. Mayor, I'll move ordinance 38-2014.
Second.
And discussion? Roll call of vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?